Good evening. I will call the November 1st, 2017 Amory City Council to order. Before we start, a welcome to our new city administrator, Kim Morris-Sikes. And she will be talking to you later. Thank you. Fran, roll call, please.
Yes. Row Bush?
Here.
Raymond Schneider?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Becker?
Yes.
And Van Larkum?
Here.
Thank you. Kim is going to lead us in the pledge, but as of last month, we will take a moment to remember those that were affected by what happened in New York yesterday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda is to go into a public hearing portion regarding the application by Equity Trust/Justin Hawkins to rezone eight parcels in the Whispering Waters development from R1 Family to R2 Two Family. There are parcels 1 through 9. Is there anyone from the public to speak to that? No one. Thank you. We will move on with the agenda. Minutes of the October 4th and the October 11th council meetings are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve both sets of minutes. Rick?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Upcoming events? Is there anyone here for upcoming events? Chief Taylor, are you going to talk about the chili? Okay, then I won't. All right. Then we'll start with the officers' reports. Fire Chief Dale Taylor.
Excuse me, Mayor. We also have in attendance the new director of the Amory Area Community Center. And she would perhaps maybe just like to get up and introduce herself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Fran. I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Okay.
I'm not very good at saying "may be."
Oh.
My name's Amanda Fisk, and I'm the new director at the Amory Community Center. So, just so everybody can see who I am, I thought I'd come and say hi.
Well, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Welcome, and I apologize. Okay, Dale. Now you're on.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me once again. Pretty quick report this month. I submitted it in writing, I believe it was last night, so it should be in your packets. We're at 433 calls this year so far, and that's a little bit ahead of pace because last year we finished out with 487, so it's been a busy year. I'd like to thank everybody that attended the Fire Prevention Day. We had a really good turnout. Lots of young folks. We had some good demonstrations, so I appreciate all the work by the firefighters. We did give away a few things at the Fire Prevention Day. We gave away about 40 smoke detectors to good homes that if you have a home that has smoke detectors that are 10 years or older, you qualify for this free giveaway. And we do have some of those left, so if anybody's in need of smoke detectors, each family or each household can have up to four. And all we ask is that you're replacing the smoke detectors that are 10 years or older, or you have defective ones that are not working. So, please give us a call at the firehouse. It's 715-268-7406. Or you can call City Hall, too. I'm sure they'll get the message to me. So, we have several of those left yet. Also, I'd like to thank, as part of my report, the Truck Committee. We presented our capital proposals for a new replacement to our 1997 pickup truck. And I'd like to thank those committee members, Chris Franzen, Joe Satrie, Chris Anderson, oh, Craig Lentz. So, I'd like to thank those guys publicly. They put a lot of work into chasing down numbers for me. We had good, successful, and don't like to say successful, but we had a good response for the mutual aid to dog fire over in Landrus about two weeks ago, and it worked well. And then ice is going to be forming on the lakes here shortly, and we're going to go into our last rotation of training with our rescue boat. So, you're going to see the guys out again with the rescue boat. As the ice forms, we're going to be training when there's 1 to 3 inches, and then again, once it's solid enough for the boat to actually go on top of the ice. So, in the next month or so, you'll see them out quite a bit on the different lakes. And we try to rotate that, not to disturb too many people on any one body of water. Are there any other questions? This is a short report this month.
As part of your report, you used to give a breakdown of number of calls, fire calls, EMS calls per month and all that. Can you start doing that? Because when I look at your report and it says we've had 433 calls, that really means nothing. Can you give a breakdown of fire calls, EMS calls, first responder calls?
Yeah, that's a lot, a lot of work. And then when we did our big study with the corporation that came in, and they indicated that the narration would be more valuable, that's kind of why I switched.
Well, they actually said that the narrative, along with the statistics merged together, would give a better picture of the activity of the department. So, how about just a breakdown of the number of fire calls and EMS calls?
Sure.
Simple enough.
And then mutual aid output on there, too.
Perfect.
Okay. And then the last thing, like Madame Mayor was talking about, is our big chili feed's coming up. It's on November 21st, the Tuesday during deer hunting. Last year, we had 23 full roasters of soup and chili, and we used all but about a part of one. So, we had a really nice crowd last year. And I'd like to remind people that you can come before the light-up parade. I assume the community's doing that this week and to light up the park. So, we were serving before, during, and after that, and it seemed to work out really well last year. That way, we didn't have a big rush and lines waiting out the door and stuff. So, we do appreciate your support. There will be also raffles, some gun raffles, and one of those really nice concrete patio tables again this year, so.
What time do you start serving?
I had a text out to Ed White. He normally sets it up. I believe it's like 5:30. We'll be there by 5:00, but about 5:30, we're going to get going with the chili. Grilled cheese will be on at 5:30.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, Chance Green.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Winter's here. All right. So, be ready for that. We're going to be pushing snow, it looks like, sooner than later. I hope Tom addresses parking regulations.
I know.
I know he knows all the rules better than I do. We've been winterizing parks, pulling in docks. I think we have one dock left. We've blown out all the parks. The dump station is now closed. Somebody dumped their camper cap down it and plugged it, so in the spring, we'll be repairing that. But, so that is closed for the season. We've also been getting winter equipment ready. All the trucks are ready, all the snow plowing gear is attached, so we are ready. Tomorrow morning, I was going to let you know, there will be a sewer main repair on Keller's, just south of the Family Restaurant. So, there will be an obstructed lane on the southbound lane, so be aware of that. And this is also the last Saturday for the dump. We will be closing it down after that. If you need to get out there, give me a call. We can try to accommodate everybody, but this will be the last Saturday, 9:00 to noon, for the season, and then that'll be closed.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nope.
Perfect.
Thank you, Chance.
Yep.
Please, Chief. Tom Marson.
Chance seems to slide through a little easier than I. I guess I'm not sure why that is.
We'll converse about that at some point, won't we? Good evening. I presented to the Council and the media the activity reports for the month of October. Certainly, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Just a couple of things this evening. We had our dug take back last Saturday at the police department, and we took in about 20 pounds of prescription medication. And on Sunday, I took them to the drop-off site in Spooner to be properly disposed. And we want to thank everyone who stopped in to dispose. Along with Chance, all fitting and depressing in my own words there, that we start winter parking tonight, and we have snow. Just a reminder that winter parking is in effect until April 15th, that there's no parking on any city street from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. And as in the past, we allow a few days as a grace period and put little red reminders on there. And certainly, if you have any problems about parking, give us a call at the police department, and we'll see what we can do. Also, over the past few weeks, we've gotten, it seems like every other day, someone's in there calling or coming in about a scam that they believe they've been involved in or have been contacted about there. And just remember that, don't give out any information, and be careful whenever you're contacted by either email, mail, or telephone there about giving out any information or complying with any requests or demands. We have had a couple individuals that have actually had a loss because of scams over the past month or so. If it sounds too good to be true, it is, and always maybe ask a friend, neighbor, or a relative there what they think about it before you make some decision on that, so. Any questions at all?
Tom, do you have any recourse when that happens, or not really?
There is very limited recourse because it's generally things that are sent by Western Union or things like that, or mailed to a drop box at some other place or out of the country and things like that. It's nearly impossible for us to ever come across the culprits in that.
Say, Tom, the IRS and the state never make cold calls to you.
Yes.
And they don't do emails either, so if anybody gets a phone call or email, they just don't have to respond.
Right. That's another one, you know, that have been around for a while there, the calls and demands for money that claiming to be the IRS and things like that. So, yeah, most places will not contact you by phone and things like that, so just be mindful. And don't make any rash decisions there, and talk to your family or friends there and see what they think first before you do something that you may regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. City Administrator, Kim Morris-Sikes.
Thank you. This is my third day on the job, so I don't have much of a report for you this evening, but I have been busy getting to know staff and learning the lay of the land and learning the community, so I hope to have more for you the next council meeting. I have started looking into some of the things that we had talked about previously, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So far, so good.
You'll be back after the first meeting.
We'll see if she lands after the council meeting.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Clip Treasure, our friend.
Just a couple of things to report on tonight. Number one, welcome to Kim, and I'm enjoying working with her on a smooth transition and happily steering some files and other things in her direction as they go, so that's going good. One of the things I wanted to report on tonight is the Wisconsin Waterways Commission has authorized the DNR to award a grant to the city of Amory in the amount of $131,788.78 for the development, 78 cents, for the development of the Grand and Boat Landing project. This was slightly less than what the city had requested by about $4,900 or so, so that helps greatly to fund that project. In addition, it's always good to recognize the Amory Lakes District for their contribution to the project, and they have an additional $20,000 pledged to help with the development of the Boat Landing as well. And then also, our city crew is going to be doing in-kind contributions through labor and a lot of the other work that counts towards our grant match on that project, so that was good news indeed. Other good news we received is that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation has issued the permits to the city for the development of the road for the new industrial park location that will service TIF number 8 on the south side of the city. It has a couple of stipulations on it, one of them being the stormwater development, but that was good news indeed, that was product of a meeting we held this spring with all the entities and stakeholders in the project, the development of that alternate road location. So, that's good news indeed that that has went ahead and been permitted.
What's the next step in that? I didn't want to cut you off, but what's the next step in that project?
Budgeting. Budgeting, design, Public Works and Finance, both meeting. Also, we want to notify the stakeholders that we're going to be ready to move forward. Also, if there's any potential developments, perhaps speaking to those developers about development agreements before we get too far along into the projects is also something customarily that's done, but it will be addressed both through Public Works and Finance in the days to come.
Thank you.
One other thing to touch on is the election. December 1st, one month from today, is the first day to circulate nomination papers for anyone interested in running for mayor or for city council. We do have four seats that are up in the spring election. The office of Mayor Kay is our current incumbent. That is for a two-year term. That is an at-large office. We also have Alderman 1 up for reelection. That's currently held by Rick Davis. Also, Alder 2 District, which is currently held by Julie Raymond Schneider, and the at-large position held by Sharon Paulson, who was appointed to fill out the balance of David Meyer's term when he had to resign. So, that's the first day to circulate nomination papers is December 1st. I'll have those packets ready November 30th. Any candidate or anyone thinking about seeking office, please come and see me, and we can get you all lined up there. Also, something I wanted to make mention of is for incumbents who should decide that they do not want to run for reelection again, they have the option of filing with me the state-prescribed form indicating that. If that form is not fired, fired, is not filed with me, I have to hold the deadline open an additional 72 hours to file nomination papers. So, the deadline to submit those papers back to me to verify signatures is January 2nd at 5:00 o'clock. But if my incumbents don't file any notice of non-candidacy, and they don't take out nomination papers either, I have to hold that deadline open until Friday, January 5th at 5:00 o'clock. That's something that isn't widely or commonly known, but I did want to put that out there just for information purposes for the public so that they are aware of that. So, that pretty much covers our election coming up. Also, I just kind of want to give a mention, he isn't here tonight, but James Nalen, the city library director, has, is going to be leaving us soon. And I just, he's not here for me to say it, but I just wanted to say that I wish him well, and I've enjoyed working with him, and that we're all going to miss him around here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
When is his last date?
I don't know for sure. Sharon, do you know when his last date is?
No, he said he had to move it up a little bit because he's taken a part-time job elsewhere, but I don't know the specific date.
Okay.
Yeah. Management Analyst, David.
Good evening, all. With our desire to have the Council approve the 2018 budget at the end of this month, that has kind of been brunt of our focus for the last month or so. We will, we are continuing to address any other issues that do come into City Hall, but that has been our main focus. Zoning-wise, we still have some zoning things going through as people try to get their last-minute projects done. As you can see, the snow is already beginning to fall, especially before the ground freezes. With that, we actually do have another meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals that will be held on Thursday, the 16th at 9:00 a.m. The board is going to convene to make a decision regarding a variance for retaining wall related to a driveway project at 540 Wisconsin Avenue. This issue was first heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals on October 18th, and per ordinance, they must make a decision within 30 days. So, we'll be meeting again on the 16th to hear any other opinions on that and then make a decision. Any other going, we have a few other projects we have going on, but I will leave those, those are on the agenda, so I will leave those for later in the meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Airport Manager, Jay Griggs.
I guess the action items from the Airport Commission are on the agenda later, so I'll leave those for later, but I'll give you just a quick rundown of our last meeting, and this is all in our minutes, too, if you need to look back. We currently have a beacon project underway. The beacon is that thing that circles around, it's green and white, and tells airplanes at night where the airport is. Ours has been, well, it still works, but we haven't been able to find anybody with enough courage to climb up there to put a bulb. I gave that job up a few years ago, and Rick did it for a while, and now it's just too risky. So, we're going to move it. It's currently not on airport property. We're leasing a spot for it, and we're going to, that lease expires yesterday, actually. We have 90 days to remove it, and I've already got people that are going to, they're going to basically take it in exchange for removing it, so it's a, won't be something we'll have to pay for, and so we'll get that down. The project is dragged out, it cut into the federal government approval process of the location and everything, and so we're held up by that, but it's probably going to go to bid probably in January, and it won't get built or installed until the early spring. I want to mention the terminal building and give you just a little update on our financial situation. We've accumulated about $565,000 worth of available airport improvement project funds, AIP funds they call, and those come from the federal government, and they're basically funds that are collected from travelers. They're gasoline, aviation fuel taxes, and there are fees that are paid by people who use the airlines. And so, it's basically aviation money that's returned to aviation in order to keep the airport system in good shape. And we get $150,000 a year, and over the years, we've kind of banked those up, and we've done some major projects at the airport over the last six years, probably, or seven. And right now, we have, all of our surfaces are basically have been repaved. We've got new LED lighting on the runway. We've got new taxiway lights. We bought a credit card system, I'll come back to that later, but we bought a credit card system in 2007 for which we paid about $400, and it's a $20,000 system. The rest was funded with these airport improvement funds, and that actually became a source of revenue for us because the city now is the seller of the fuel at the airport. I used to do it for the city, but when this became available, the city buys the fuel and sells it and makes a profit on it, so it generates revenue now. So, we've long since gotten our $400 back on that. But we have built these monies up. We're going to be spending some of it. The beacon, we think, they say the high estimate of that is $85,000. I don't think it will be that much, but they wanted to make sure that I had a high enough number to be covered. And we're also looking to spend, I didn't bring the picture up here, but another probably $100,000 or so for what, a piece of snow removal equipment. And I've been getting some estimates from Chance and about what they would like to buy. What we're going to do is try to buy something that's compatible with the consistent equipment rather than duplicate it, because the way, the way we can work that is that as long as the airport is taken care of first when it comes to a snowfall, then the airport can actually lease that equipment back to the city. So, we're looking at a big four-wheel-drive tractor kind of a thing, and they're also looking for a side mower to attach to it. And I'm not quite sure I can get the side mower through because they buy snow removal equipment but not mowing equipment, which is kind of strange. But at any rate, we can use those airport improvement funds to buy a piece of equipment that then could be used by the city elsewhere. We did, we did this several years ago. As you recall, we bought a road grader type of equipment, and it turned out to be, it was used, and it turned out to be somewhat of a lemon, and it was traded in a while back. And so, now we're, we've now waited long enough so we can get another piece of equipment. So, we're working on that. But even after we spend that, those dollars, we're still going to have about $380,000 left. So, the airport chairman, Jason Whitley, suggested we start thinking about maybe getting a terminal building out there. So, the Airport Commission, over the next few meetings, will start that process. It's a long, long process. It takes two or three years to get something, but we'll eventually do something out there. What it is, it can be anything from a very small little building with a couple bathrooms in it, and a place for pilots to sit when they fly into town and wait while their business, their customers are doing business. It can go all the way up to something that would be, have an office in it and have an attached hangar that we could then lease out to what they call an FBO, a fixed base operator, who would be someone like Darrell Gibson used to be, where they would do maintenance on the field and take care of airplanes and serve the traveling public. Right now, there's nobody really out there to take care of somebody if they come in and they need something. So, I just want to let you know that we'll be talking about that going forward, but it's a ways in the future. We had spent some time, or I'd spent some, well, the commission and myself spent some time with some, with the dog park people, and my understanding now is that they're looking at a different site, so that's really off the airport agenda at this point. We also issued, or you issued, a lease last year to a fellow who wanted to establish a skydiving business at the airport, and I think he's kind of gone by the wayside, I think. We issued a lease for half of last year and this year, and he kind of kept telling me he was going to do it, going to do it, but, you know, was having delays, and now I haven't been able to get ahold of him for a while. So, that lease actually expires at the end of the year, and it's kind of too bad. It would have been a nice addition to the city to have a business at the airport, but and he was in that business elsewhere. But I think he has a job now during the day, and he, last time I talked to him, he was talking about doing it on the weekends, but that hasn't come together. If he does come back and wants to do it, then obviously, he'd have to get a new lease, and he'd have to approve that. The other thing that's happening is kind of interesting. Just this last Saturday, I got a call from the University of Minnesota Engineering students, and they wanted to know if there was any way possible they could use part of our taxiway to test this car they're building for international competition. And I wish I would have brought pictures of it along. It's quite a deal. It's a, one of these race car things, you know, with the big wheels, and it's got a fin in the front and two fins in the back, and what they're trying to do is test the aerodynamics of those fins, and they're tweaking them, and then they're going into international competition in Michigan. They'll be competing with the Germans and the Japanese and the Chinese, and 120 teams from all over the country. And last year, they finished sixth place at this competition, so they're really trying to tweak this up. And I said, you know, as long as you get your car off the runway before an airplane comes or something, I think we can live with that. So, we made an executive decision. They were out there last week, about, I don't know, half a dozen or eight of them with, they have a trailer that the university pays for and this car, and then they had three, four vehicles, and they set up, and they were running their car up and down, and they have this car set up with all kinds of sensors, so when it comes in after a run, they plug a computer into it and download all the information, then they decide whether they need to tweak their fins a little bit to get a little more performance and trying to get the balance between traction on the ground and speed through the, through the air. So, it's kind of fun, and they, they, they'll probably be back. They were here all day. They didn't, they sent me a text when they left about 6:00 o'clock. And it's kind of fun to watch them, they just run up and down. But anyway, since they, since it's just a vehicle and they watch for the airplanes, there was one fellow was flying out there, they, they just pull it off the taxiway when they're doing it. They're not using the runway or just a little corner of the ramp, so. So, that's been going on out there. Other than that, that's, that's the extent of it. I'll be back. We've got some action items for you, too, but I'll be back up when you get to those. And Rick, I'm trying to get my zipper down.
Do you like a recess?
Moving on to committee reports.
Well, I was just, we were looking at that, and we were trying to figure, we met so many times. Was that...
times, was that for budget or was that for?
Well, we, our, our last meeting was on Tuesday and we met uh, to work on our budget. Uh, mostly uh, we worked on capital projects, uh, so we'll be meeting again, I'm guessing in the next week or, week or so. Uh, however, I was out of the country, so I missed the meeting prior to that and I'm not sure what the agenda was for that meeting.
We've only really met once since last.
Okay, so we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, and we're fine and I think our, our budget's coming along pretty good, David and uh, Fran both are doing a pretty good job and all the department heads and uh, hopefully we'll wrap that up this coming week. So that's it for finance.
Okay, thank you. Old Business, consideration of locating a dog park on city property located at the intersection of Griffin and Minneapolis.
Okay, um, after two years or more of meeting with the dog park people and going through various uh, scenarios and various places, uh, we, I believe, have gotten uh, pretty much unanimous uh, um, joy at uh, finding a place that was acceptable to, to both the city and the dog park folks. Um, and the, the proposal is to allow them to use the eight acre parcel that includes part of the, the uh, damp ground and so on at the corner of Minneapolis and Griffin. Uh, you have a, a sheet in your, in the minutes that show that. Uh, we've met, I met with them, uh, Bones and I met with them out, out there and looked at it, delineated it, um, and so at, at present, uh, I, do we have to make a motion to that effect? Suppose we do uh, sooner or later.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, anyway, Parks and Rec uh, recommends it and they've accepted that recommendation and uh, uh, details are being worked out, but uh, there's street access, two street accesses, um, we already mow the grass and plow the snow there, so there's no, uh, with the exception of mowing the, the interior of the park, uh, a few times during the summer, there's no additional funds or anything that we have to come up with or do and so the, the process is in the dog park folks' backyard now to raise the money for the, however much fence they want to put up around that, so um, when we get there, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
The only thing, there, there was one issue and uh, this came up, or I was reminded of it, I guess, after we met with the dog park people is those, that acreage is our only gold star available developable land, which means, and I see Mr. Isaacson's in the, in the audience and perhaps he can explain it better to me, but the gold star from an AEDC standpoint is, it's, it's ready to go, it's ready to be built on and ready to be developed, so.
We, we still re- retain the best of the, of the uh, part at the end of the street, whatever that street is that goes towards uh, at the end of the ballpark, so uh, that's still part of it. Um, you know, I guess uh, it was part of our consideration, uh, but the land has been there and for sale for fifteen years at least and uh, and to be fair, the dog park folks were notified that if somebody showed up and wanted to desperately have that piece of land, uh, they're gone. We're, we're not, you know, same as it would be for anything else that the city owns. If uh, there's a higher use for it and someone's willing to pay, um, that's, that can go away. So, um. Yes.
I, I know there's a snowmobile route through there. Is there gonna be a, a accessibility?
Not, not through that, not through that piece, I don't believe.
It goes um, right next to the gas.
But that's the other side of the street, that's the south side of the street.
Then it goes through north and around the ball then.
There will still be, there will still be availability through that part of the wetline, yes, as far as I know.
Have a question, Rick. So it's the, the, there's two parcels there, so this would be the eight acre parcel?
Yes, yep, yep. The, the three acres, which is primarily dry, uh, the three acres and, and uh, much more developable than, than probably the corner lot is, so we still have that, that uh, availability.
Do you know the particulars as far as who does what with insurance and who takes the funds, is all that been worked out then, or you still have to handle those details?
Pretty much we're, it'll end up being a city park. We'll do the, we'll own the land, we'll collect the, the monies, uh, I, I don't know that we're gonna have a city employee out there collecting the money, but the monies, the membership, so on, will come to the city. And the, the exact details haven't been worked out, but that's, that's what they wanted to, wanted to do originally was to um, have a dog park and raise the money to put the fence up, maybe, maybe buy a picnic table or something for them to sit at in there. Um, and you know, we have much better control over this piece of ground than we would have had uh, at the airport. This, this piece of ground has to pass the city council muster all the time, but uh, the airport has extraneous uh, influences that we can't control, i.e. FAA and Wisconsin Aeronautical and so on, so it was, it's, I think it's the best compromise, uh, after a couple of years of looking at three or four different sites, five different sites. Um, I don't, I don't know if everybody's happy, but uh, seems to be the most for the least, so, or the most for the most or whatever, however, so.
Rick, on the agenda, it says consideration, but under new business, I don't see any place to vote on it, so um, I don't know if we can vote on it tonight or do you want to wait till next month?
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't, yes.
On the agenda of, of the action item, you can go ahead and make a motion to designate that area for the Friends of Amory area dog park to develop for a new dog park that area is city-owned property.
And I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to um, let the dog park people have the eight acres at the corner of Griffin and Minneapolis. Any other discussion?
Uh, let, let them have the use of it, not let them.
Yeah, it'll still remain city property, right?
And it's, and it's still contingent upon them providing fencing and all that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor? Hi. Opposed? Carried.
Quick question.
Thank you.
Um, do some of the pubs still have right of way to put the trail through there for this year?
Yeah, there's not gonna be any.
There won't be a fence, so.
Stuff done this fall, so, not unless they magically come up with ten grand or so to put fence up anyway.
Moving on to new business, approval of ordinance zero five dash two one one, two thousand seventeen, Hoskin rezoning eight of our parcels in Whispering Waters from R1 single family to R2 two-family residential.
I will speak to that as uh, as the council's liaison to the planning commission. The planning commission met this past Thursday and uh, Justin Hosking was there and lots of questions were answered and the planning commission gave their approval, or their recommendation to the city council to approve the rezoning change.
Thank you Julie.
So I would make a motion that we uh, go ahead and, and adopt that rezoning change from R1 to R2 for those parcels that are listed on your agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the rezoning. Any more questions?
Just have a question, um, did we get any comment from the current neighbors there that any, nobody?
No, there weren't, there was, was no disagreement among neighbors, nobody showed up at the meeting, uh, so it seemed to be a go.
And they, all the neighbors received notice of the open hearing and uh, Justin also notified, went to each neighbor and told them about it, so they're all in agreement.
Okay.
Does he have plans in the works? Does he stuff out there in the near future?
He has some plans, yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Hi.
I.
Opposed? Thank you, carried. Um, item nine, approval of a lease between the city and Dennis Newman for one hundred and three point seventy-three acres of land at the airport.
That's me again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We've leased the, the, the crap land at the airport, we've leased out for several years and when I was, when I became airport manager, which was several years ago, um, we were getting a couple thousand dollars a year for that and so we put it out for bids five years ago and, and ended up getting thirteen thousand, something and change, so um, the, the winner of the bid at that time was Dennis Newman, he's been a very good tenant person to work with and um, he would like to renew that lease and so I, I did a little research because we're required by some of the federal and state regulations to make sure that anything we do is at market rates at the airport. So fortunately, the University of Wisconsin Extension for Polk County did a study last year about crop lease rates and uh, without going into a lot of detail, this is a very good deal for us. Um, it's a very, a very high rate and, and Dennis likes the land and wants to use it, so uh, what it, what it comes down to is um, uh, it'd be twelve thousand, a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year, that's approximately a hundred and seventeen dollars per acre and there's a hundred and three plus or minus acres out there. And uh, Dennis was nice enough, even a few years ago, we had, we had one of the neighbors that, their, their property's right adjacent, Tars wanted to put a little garden in, he says, that's okay, let them take it, you know, it's not a problem, so he, he's a good guy and so uh, the airport commission voted to recommend to you that you approve that lease.
Did, did we talk about, didn't we talk about a lower rate for that or than one seventeen? I, I, why is uh, I thought we talked about dropping or did he ask about dropping the rate?
Yeah, he had talked about dropping the rate, then in conversation with Jay and reviewing the previous lease that Dennis had, he actually had paid for and to lease some city-owned property.
I think it's the same piece the dog park is going on.
Yes.
It was twelve acres in the business park, but.
But Dennis never utilized that or, or used that property at all.
He never knew about it, is kind of the way he said it.
Yeah, he kind of didn't realize that was part of the lease and that was available to him.
But when I, when I talked to him, he said he would be happy to renew it at the current rate, but I didn't feel that charging him thirteen thousand was appropriate, because he never even got use of the twelve acres in the industrial park. So I just adjusted the rate to what it would be for the hundred and three at the airport, uh, which is good, I did that because it sounds like the, the land at the industrial park isn't available anyway, so I just adjusted the rate down for that, but he, he said he was fine with paying that rate, so uh, that's why the airport commission recommended it, was that he was okay with it.
Well, I like the rate, so I'll make a motion that we, that we renew the lease at uh, at that same rate for the uh, acreage, minus, minus twelve acres.
It's a five-year period.
Five-year lease.
The new lease is, is written up to eliminate those and Dev has the lease, he'll stop in and sign it if it's approved tonight, so it's all set to go.
Okay, motion made, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you Rick. Motion made and seconded to approve the lease, more discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Right.
Opposed? Carried. You might as well stay there Jay, approval of the airport hangar leases for Reese, Luke, Christiansen, Anderson and Nielsen.
Yeah, we, we have uh, five leases for your approval tonight that have been recommended by the airport commission, uh, three of them are for, for hangars that have changed hands and, and we don't, leases out there are not transferable, so when a, when a new person buys a hangar, we write a new lease with them and, and that starts their, their lease period, which is um, I think it's twenty years. Um, and so uh, the, the ones we have, Dan Reese, who is the one that owns the biggest new hangar next to the gas pumps, has bought the other biggest new hangar, which is the first one you see when you come into the airport from Gordy Peterson. Uh, Dan Luke has bought Ron Anderson's smaller hangar and Ron Anderson in turn wants to build a new hangar and get a new lease in the new area that we have out there. We have one taxiway that we built a few years ago for our airport expansion project that has eight hangars on it and now we have two people want leases there, so, so we, we need a new lease for Luke. Dean Christiansen uh, bought a hangar from John Noah and then Ron Anderson, of course, has a new one, he wants to build a sixty by seventy hangar in the spring. And uh, Scott Nielsen, who's, lives in the cities but likes Amory and wants to uh, do his flying over here, uh, is planning on a sixty by sixty hangar and he wants to get into construction right away. I had to stake it out for him a week ago, so that, you know, his contractor could look at it and get going, so um, the airport commission recommended the approval of those three leases. Our lease is out there, just for your information, we lease the land underneath the hangar, we basically use the footprint of the hangar, because some of the lots are odd, odd sized, so we, instead of leasing the lot, we lease the square footage, so um, and our current rate is eight cents a square foot per year. Uh, yes, eight, eight cents a square foot per year, so that ends up being three or four hundred dollars, depending on the size of the hangar, and then they also pay property taxes on their hangar, so we get that revenue uh, from the airports. The airport commission recommended approving all five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and approve. Motion made and seconded to approve the hangar leases, discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Right.
Opposed? Carried. And the airport recommendations for a new petition for federal funds.
Okay, we, I, I appreciate you putting the money in on the agenda first, now it's time to talk about the money out.
Okay.
Seven years, uh, well, two thousand and seven, um, I became aware that we could use these AIP funds to buy revenue-producing equipment, so we bought a credit card terminal uh, to put at the airport. What that does is it, it runs the pump, so you can go into it with your credit card, like a gas station basically, and uh, at the time, that was pretty unique for airports, but uh, we bought that system, again, it was about twenty thousand dollars, our share at the time was two and a half percent, so we paid about four hundred dollars for that equipment. Well, it's now become outdated and is very rapidly becoming uh, uh, unusable. The credit card companies are coming out with these new chips and this particular equipment can't be modified to use a chip. Uh, the other thing is that the phone companies uh, are getting away from copper lines, they're going to fiber optics and this machine doesn't work with fiber optics. It, it has a twelve hundred baud modem in it, if you can imagine that, that's what we connect to when we connect to that system. So we're gonna have to replace it sooner or later, the deadline is October first, I believe, twenty twenty for the chip card stuff, um, but the, the company right now is trying to push out the replacement model and so they are, they're offering a pretty, pretty big discount, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars plus another nine hundred and fifty in, in the, the service contract and things, so if we could buy it during that period, it would be a good thing. And that uh, uh, that, the new, the new one will bolt right onto the current pedestal, so they said that even Rick and I could install it, we wouldn't have to pay additional for that and their, part of the rebate includes sending them back the interior parts of the current one, because they can re-manufacture those and use them for support for the other older systems that are out there. So the bottom line is uh, it's about a thirteen thousand dollar purchase, uh, after the, the discounts and the rebates, um, and that, uh, federal funds can be used for that, our current rate is five percent, will be the city's share, so five percent of thirteen thousand would be what the, the net cost of the city would be. Um, uh, and this new system can work by either wireless cellphone, it can work by internet, we can string a, a ethernet cable out there if it's within three hundred feet and it's pretty close, I tried to measure it this week and, but, and it also works on wifi, but uh, if we can get it to work with an internet, that'd be the, less expensive. If we need to go to the cellphone thing, then, then it's about another thousand dollars for the equipment. Um, we'll save a little money by uh, going to ethernet, because we now have a dedicated phone line for that system at the airport and that's costing us about thirty-five dollars a, a month. Uh, if we have to go to the cellphone type system, then we have a, we'll be paying forty dollars a month for the cellphone service, so it'd be about a wash in terms of expense. Um, anything that we buy, uh, you know, through the airport has to be, um, we have to petition for it, we have to, we have to tell the government in advance what we plan to use these airport improvement funds for and so the thing we need to do tonight is to, that has to. And so, the thing we need to do tonight is to, that has to follow a public hearing. So, what we're asking for is to set a public hearing, and my understanding is your next meeting is the 29th. We'll need to publish a notice in the paper, which I'll get to Fran, announcing the hearing and what, what we plan to spend the money on, and that has to be published 10 days before the hearing, so we'll get that out in time. But if you could do the hearing prior to the next meeting, like you have done in the past, that would be helpful. The only issue there is I'm getting a new knee the day before, so I'm probably not going to be here. But I think Rick can answer most of the questions about the things that are in the petition. I think Jason Whitley and some of the airport commissioners, Paul is on the airport commission, some of those folks may be here to answer questions. Nobody's ever showed up in the past, and I think it's largely because most of the things we're petitioning, everything we're petitioning for is, only costs the city 5% of what we spend. So, but let me just real quick read you the list of, most of these things were in the petition, but the reason we have to do a new one is the snow removal equipment we want to buy, we bought that one before, so it went out of our petition. So, now, we got a petition for a new one. And then, of course, the, the credit card system upgrade is not in there because we weren't anticipating that. But, so, the, the things that'll be in this petition would be to purchase new snow removal and mowing equipment. I slipped that in there, and I don't know if they'll approve it or not, but we'll try. And then, we have to update our airport layout plan. That's, that's something that, most of these things were in the previous petition. Construct a new snow removal equipment building. That's a building to store the equipment in. But in the past, the city stored the grader we had at, at the city garage. So, if we don't need to build a building to store it at the airport, then, then we can maybe proceed on the terminal building first, rather than the storage building. But I haven't had a chance to talk to Chance about that, see if there's room for what he's talking about at the garage, or whether we need to build one.
Depending on what we get.
Pardon?
Depending on what we get, it'll depend on what we're looking at. I don't, I don't have any space for it right now.
Well, anyway, we'll keep it in the petition in case we want to do it. And we've, we've also talked from time to time about installing security lighting around the hangars and the fielding in the terminal. We're pretty, pretty dark out there at night. We've talked about redeveloping the, the terminal area, and that's, that's kind of tied in with the terminal building and parking space and that. And expanding the apron, that's in there, that's kind of standard, but I don't know that we're probably going to be doing that, but we want to keep it in the petition. If it's not there, we can't do it. So, and then, we talked about an auto parking lot, constructing hangars in the event we decide we want to build some kind of a hangar as a revenue-producing facility out there to attract a person to come and be an FBO. We need to do a wildlife site visit. That's a federal requirement, and they charge us something for that. And we always put land acquisition in there for runway approaches. And the reason we do that, we're not looking to buy any land right now, but if a piece of land that's on the airport approach comes for sale, we want to be in a position to, to move on it without having to go through this petition process, which takes a month or two. So, we keep that in there, and, and then, seal coating and crack filling, they now cover the expense of that. We did some this year, so we keep that in there so that we can get reimbursed for that work. Clearing and maintaining the runway approaches, and then, then we'll add the, the credit card update to that. So, the action I really need is the, the setting of the public hearing, and then, at that hearing, you'll be asked to, after, after the hearing, you'll be asked to pass a resolution petitioning the federal government for these projects. And it's same thing you've done before, it's just we have to go through the process and all the paperwork, so. But I did want to mention, with respect to the credit card machine, I think the airport commission and myself would like to see you maybe consider buying it now while this big rebate is on. They don't know how long that's going to last. They think it might last till the end of the year. We can't buy it till we get the petition approved, so it can't be done. But if we could buy that in December while the rebate is still on, then I, we would get reimbursed for 95% of the cost, but you'd have to front the 13,000 plus or minus that it would cost. They also will finance this for two years at 5%, and that would accomplish the same thing. We could buy it and finance it, but I couldn't get your reimbursement till the end of the two years when you've paid everything. So, that's kind of the way it works.
How quick do you get reimbursed if we pay for it now?
Pardon?
How, how quick do we get reimbursed?
Well, you're dealing with the state, and they've been pretty good. The lady down there that handles the funds, we get along pretty good over the years, but it would still probably be a month or two, probably, you know? Once you buy it, then I have to process the reimbursement form, and it's a big checklist and stuff and paperwork. But the money is ours, and it's already set aside, and it's part of this money, you know, that we already have. Once the petition's approved, this 500 and some thousand that we have now, it's basically our money, so it's just a case of processing the paperwork. So, I'm guessing, Rick, but I would say a month or two.
Okay, that's fine.
So, that's, that's just something for you to consider. You don't need to act on that tonight because we can't act on it until we've, we've done the petition thing at the next meeting. But I just wanted to mention it while I was here, in case you had any questions.
You're educating us.
Well, we've learned one thing, and that's not to change pants quick before the meeting. I should have just worn my, I should have just worn my dirty jeans. I'd have been better off.
Does anybody need a...
Your zipper is down.
My pen is down, too. I was trying to be discreet.
There's no discretion when I come here. You folks know that from the past. I should say hi to Alan. Alan is the former mayor of Hudson. He's a very close friend of mine, and he has a cabin up north, and he always tells me about my appearances here. He must watch your meetings faithfully on the cable network or something, so. So, if he's watching tonight, it'll be all over Hudson by tomorrow. So, anyway, I guess the motion would be in order to set the public hearing to consider a petition.
Okay, and that would be November 29th? Right. The motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set an open hearing, November 29th. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, Julie, since you're the one that got me into this job.
Well, I worked with you a lot of years, and I know.
Appreciate the support.
That, that is good money that we get for all those improvements out there, that 2.5% or 5%, it's amazing, so.
Yeah, it was 2.5% for many years.
Foolish not to go after.
Yeah, no, and it's allowed us to have a really good, good airport, which is a good thing. I've said before in here that Hudson and River Falls and some of those towns would die if they could have an airport, because it's a, it's a good thing for business and a good thing. We've got 20, I think we have 28 hangars out there and approximately that many airplanes, and, and it, we get flights in all the time on a used courtesy car. We, we thank you for that, but it does get a fair amount of use. People fly in to go to a funeral, or visit friends, or go to the YMCA camp. One guy comes in and do that, and they, they use our courtesy car. And unfortunately, we've had some very uncharitable barn swallows who built a nest right above it, and so, I, I had to wash it last week because it was not very pretty. But the barn swallows are going to have to build a new nest next spring, and when they start, I'm going to be right there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, any questions, airport stuff? I don't come in here every month like the rest of the people because we usually don't have that much to talk about.
Good job.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Item 12, downtown hanging planter purchase. Who's is that? Oh.
Maybe you would like to say something about this, you probably know much as I do. No? Well, anyways, we, we've been in cahoots with Dragonfly out there. Rob has helped us out. We actually just picked up all the final pots on the corners. We cleaned them all with them this morning. We got them all in storage now. With that being said, it's been brought to our attention that our current hanging pots are not up to par. What? There's no one behind you. Which Rob jumped on, and he actually found a variety of different style hanging pots, a lot more elaborate. They have storage capacity tanks, be less watering, or they'd get watered more properly. No weekends where they'd dry out or anything like that. A little larger pots and a little more durable. They actually wrap around the, our current poles, and the weight of them tighten up as they slide down the tapered pole. And they're looking to purchase them. The, there's only 14 available poles that don't have street signs or something on them, so we'd have to start with that. But they are expensive. They run $160 a pot, so that is something to consider. But that is all the information I have on them. I think it would be a definite upgrade from the current hanging ones we have that tend to fall apart midsummer, or right before a news broadcast or something like that.
Is there money in budget for, for that somewhere, or?
We're looking at, from when I talked to Bones about it, it's my understanding, it's something that we inadvertently overlooked when we had our budget meeting, as far as budgeting for it in the 2018 budget, is what it would be paid from and what it would be included in. But however, he has to know right away whether or not we want to order those to get the order in. So, we get them, so we put it on the agenda for tonight then, so that portion of it can be addressed immediately.
Yep, this, this offer expires at the end of the year.
Do we pay for them now? Or were they, those hangars, are they city property, or does the women's club do them, or how is that?
The hangars would be, it's my understanding, the hangars would be city property, and that separate apartment that we did with the ground planters with the big pots. And the big pots, the discussion had been of having sponsorship of those, hopefully through the businesses that they sit in front of. And several businesses have had contact and they would be happy to sponsor them, but we haven't had a letter go out asking everybody or anything of that nature. But this is, would be a separate apart from that. It would be a 2018 budget item that, at this point, that the city would pay for the purchase and be responsible for.
So, we're looking at about $1,600 for these 14 pots?
At $160 a piece, it'd be roughly 2,400, 2,500, I believe, off the top of my head.
2,240.
Is the community club going to continue to fund to fill them?
I was going to say that. I believe the community club pays for the flowers that go in the pots.
They traditionally have them.
And I believe they, that would still continue.
With dragonfly.
And there would be new baskets. It's my understanding from talking to Bones, new baskets, but same type of program to maintain them and fill them and back.
So, dragonfly and plants?
Correct. Yep, we hang them, and water them.
Do we have $2,200 somewhere in the budget for this year?
Well, there is if you want to dip into the rainy day fund, or a fund balance, or something of that nature. Otherwise, we can include it in the 2018 budget and pay for it after the first year. So, that's up to you folks.
I would, I think we'd want to put it into the 2018 budget.
We just need to, just need to approve the ordering of them.
Ordering now, yeah.
Because we don't have to pay for them till...
Nope, just authorize them.
I make the motion to authorize the ordering of the new pots.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to order the 14 new pots. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item 13, conversion to paid time off system for employee benefits.
This was an item that was previously discussed with council, and I have been working on it for the past two days, so I'm just kind of reviewing the city's personnel policy to see what's in it regarding the vacation hours that staff are eligible to receive. So, I've got pretty much the skeleton portion of it put together, and I have, I would talk to David and Fran this afternoon to find out some of the other cities that I could talk to, to find out what they have been doing in this regard that have a PTO program or a policy in place. So, it's underway, and I will hopefully have more information for you at the next meeting. Okay?
Super.
Two days? What more time do you need?
Well, I know, I know. It's just kind of, you know, I tried to get more information from the Wisconsin League of Municipalities and couldn't find staff, so that kind of bogged me down just a little.
Very good resource, that council.
Yeah, they are. Any questions? Any comments? Any suggestions?
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any questions from the public regarding agenda items? Possible closed session proceeding under Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent 1, parent C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This pertains to 2018 employee wages and benefits. The council will reconvene and open session and may act on matters discussed in closed session and to complete the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion, go into closed session.
Do we have something to discuss?
Well, that's, okay, that's, yes. The table over there is saying, yes, we do.
All right.
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, go into closed session. Fran, I believe we need a roll call.
Yes, we do. Ruby Strobeusch?
Yes.
Lynn Schneider?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Dicker?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you. Would you all a favor? We are here. Thank you.